I will call a meeting to order and, uh, like, board your motion. Quick, pronounce here.
That's what I... Sorry if it doesn't talk...
Whatever you want to do.
I don't feel comfortable. Comment?
Uh, well, thank you, Mayor Smalling, and each of the members of the council tonight for letting me be here. I love that we are in a community where you can pivot in if we have opportunity for something like this. Um, I will say, uh, I'm... My name is Logan Trowbridge. My name on this answer. Like, actually, see everybody. Uh, my name's Logan Trowbridge, and I'm the youth pastor at Lakeside Church. And, uh, there, I get the opportunity each Wednesday night to be able to tell a little bit of good news to each of our youth. And I wanted to do that tonight as we get started, um, and share a little bit, actually, what we talked about last night. We were sharing about the Easter story and still going through some of the events of the Easter story. And we came across a story in Matthew chapter 27 that talks about, um, Jesus being brought captive, um, with the governor and a man named Barabbas. And he is presented before a crowd of people, and, uh, the crowd is told to choose which one they want to let free. They get to choose Barabbas or they get to choose, um, Barabbas the criminal or Jesus the one called Messiah. And the crowd shouts to let Barabbas free. And instead, um, they shout for Jesus to be crucified, and Jesus takes the punishment for these guys. He takes the punishment that was meant for someone else. And, uh, it was what the crowd demanded. And, uh, I know, I'm saying it's good news and it sounds like a sad story, but I think about how it applies to us today and, uh, what it looks like for our situation and for our lives. And, uh, is that we have the opportunity to have that relationship with a God that's willing to do whatever it takes to remove those barriers and whatever it takes to keep us separated from Him. He's ready to get rid of any of those barriers and to give us that chance, um, because He loves us in that way. And I think that's an awesome thing, being able to go into any area of our life knowing that the Creator of the universe and the one who made it all wants to have that relationship with us is just an awesome thing. Um, I just wanted to share that tonight and, um, encouraged in everything that we do and everything that we're walking through in our city and our families. Uh, we've got that opportunity to walk alongside a God who cares about us enough for that, and that's an awesome thing. So, um, I'd like to pray for the council tonight, um, as we get started. God, we just thank you so much for all that you do. Uh, I thank you for allowing us to, um, be able to have the freedom to have democracy and to be able to voice the things that are going on and to be able to have, uh, a government that is prepared to lead with men and women of integrity who, uh, are ready to take on the issues and to look at, uh, what's going on in our community and to be able to lead in that way. I ask that you give wisdom to each one tonight, uh, with Mayor Smalling and each one of the council members as these, um, as they... Each note on the agenda is brought up by us, that you just give wisdom, um, you give clarity, and, uh, you just give a piece as we, uh, walk through each of these and we move through as a community and we grow, and we just ask for your guidance in every step. We thank you and we praise you and it's a duty of mine.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meredith is filling in for Ms. Keisha Tanah. So, you can call the roll, please.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Calvert?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Wilkerson?
Here.
Mayor Smalling?
Here.
Okay. Uh, we have the roll. The next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. And, um, while we're in the UGMS here, the work study, you can talk with us extensively about a task order for the, uh, proposal to do a study to expand the sewer plant. And it got left off the agenda, so I would give a motion to adopt the agenda and add that in. How much can I add that on to the agenda? We have a second. Motion to second to add GNC's task order for the wastewater treatment plant expansion study to the, uh, file paper. Say, uh...
All right.
Motion carries. The agenda has been adopted. Next item on the agenda is the public comments for the agenda items tonight. I didn't put out a sign-on sheet for public comments, but is there anyone here from the public that likes a comment on the related agenda items tonight? The new public comments, the next item on the agenda is the minutes for 3/17/2022 special call meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the minutes on March 17, 2022 special call meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 3/17, uh, special call minutes. Um, Ms. Meredith, call the roll, please.
Uh, Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The 3/17 minutes are approved. The, uh, next item on the agenda is the 3/17, uh, 2022 city council, uh, minutes.
I have a motion to approve those minutes.
I have a motion.
Not a second.
I have a motion and a second for the 3/17, uh, regular city council meeting minutes. Ms. Meredith, call the roll, please.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion carries the 3/17 minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the, uh, April 7th, 2022 special call meeting. All right, I have a motion.
Motion approved. Second. Sorry. I was gonna say special call meeting.
I second.
I have a motion and a second for the April 7th, 2022 special call meeting. Uh, Ms. Meredith, call the roll, please.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
The April 7th, 2022 minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the March 22, uh, financial statement. Keisha had spoken at the work study that she wouldn't be here tonight. If anybody had any questions, then you can reach out to her prior to this meeting. And, uh, I'm aware that no one has had any questions or nothing had been directed since just now. But, uh, so, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve March 2022 financial statement.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the March of '22 financial statement. Ms. Meredith, call the roll, please.
Councilman Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
The March financial statement is approved. Right there. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 022022-1, and it is the, uh, second... This is this reading of the approval of policy procedure manual. Blank at the moment, but we did this on the first reading already, and this will be the final reading, and it will be implemented after its passage. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, adopt the ordinance 022022-1, the policy procedure manual.
I have a motion and a second to...
Second.
Motion and a second to, uh, pass the ordinance approving the, on the second reading of policy procedure manual. Now, in the discussion, if anyone understands, we, we had put this off because Aaron had asked a question about the gratuity. And it is, I think it's in the notes that, that it is stated that the gratuities are acceptable under the, uh...
Ethics policy.
Ethics policy, yes.
Right.
So...
So, is this the second reading you said?
Yes. Everything that's in policy will take effect, um, after tonight. We've been kinda going back and forth between the two, comparing the two, taking, uh, all the certain things and how they apply or how they would apply differently as we've been going through this. So, it would be nice to have on set a document up before you make a decision. Ms. Meredith, call the roll, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. The, uh, update on the policy's procedure manual is approved. The, uh, next item is ordinance 032022-4, the creation of the parks and recreation community.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 032022-4 for parks and recreation to be creating parks and recreations.
Not a second, the motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for the, uh, ordinance to, uh, create the parks and recreation community. In the discussion portion, I would like to point out that, uh, Keisha provided a mini copy for everyone with some strike-throughs of some of the discussion that we had at the work study. And I would like to ask, Mr. Brown, uh, the recommendation denied is revised from the first reading?
Someone just even made a motion to amend, I'm not getting those changes.
To make the changes as written?
I think that's what they wanna do.
I'll need to amend my original motion?
No, 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 but now that it's on the floor, now someone makes a motion to amend that ordinance.
Oh, okay.
To conform to what was passed out with the agenda. It's true what was passed out, so you've got a lot to do. If that's what you want me to ask up to the council, you may or may not want to make those changes. If you want to make a motion to amend it...
I want to discuss a couple other changes we might want to make here.
Okay. It's fair to just... You know, right yet?
The other two, it says the other two members will be appointed by the mayor.
Okay. There hasn't been a motion to amend it yet. It really would be good if we went back...
I made a motion to make some, to make some changes to amend this ordinance.
I'll say that.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance. Uh, Ms. Meredith, call the roll on...
Let's just go with what the motion was for.
Okay. So, the two members there are appointed. We went back and forth. There's been discussion of a council member presiding on it and a council member not. Do we want to make it where it's a council member in addition to the five? Do we want not have a council member like, let's have that? Because we're the ones that see the budget.
That's correct.
So, do we need a voice with, they're not voting member maybe, but a...
I think we could have a non-voting member, though.
That they can perform with. This is what the council has.
Yeah.
We had an informal meeting with, not a full council meeting, but an informal meeting with interested parties prior to this meeting, and that was one of the questions that come up. A council member representative, we did expect to them potentially not being a voting member, but to be able to be the...
It's up to the council. You can want, you can want one of your own as a liaison or as a voting member, whichever you prefer.
But we did talk about, if you're stated in the ordinance, they would rely in general. So, but if we wanted to make that a mandate, the member would participate.
And is this committee, y'all, if this committee gonna require a coach to stand back there and pick, or we want to do that?
Well, you know, we talked about that a little bit at the work study, and, uh...
So, the last time we were, we were all in this room and you were here, if, I'm not mistaken, you said that it would be left up to that body to decide whether or not they wanted to have background checks mandatory.
Unless you want to pass the resolution requiring it for anyone that participates in the go-to the park, you can do that. You don't have, you're giving them rulemaking authority, but you can also make rules. It's your part. This is a committee you're creating.
Okay. Would it be better if they pushed forward that recommendation or...
If you think they'll do it and you want it, that's fine, but if you're not sure, pass it yourself. I think, I think this body needs to pass it, that we know it's gonna be done.
Do you think this body should make that rule?
I would amend section two where it says that the board shall also provide such rules and regulations that may be appropriate with respect to administration of the parks, such rules in council. I would just put right there, uh, as one rule for the board, all coaches and assistant coaches participating in park activity shall be subject to a background check. We kept on file with whoever, keep it on file. Just make that, just put that as one rule that you're passing right here.
Okay. Does that need to be part of the amendment?
That's what you're doing. That's not, no, but that's part of it. You can have as many amendments as you want. I think it's...
So, you got a list of, okay.
Can you repeat that when you said, John?
It says, uh, the count, it says the committee or the board, the board shall require, this board shall require background checks for all coaches and assistant coaches participating in park activities. Period. That's part of the ordinance that way. It's not something that can be changed by the board, by the, by the Parks Board. This body, the council, could change it.
So, going back to, do we want to, did we decide we want a council member? Did we decide we haven't decided?
You need to vote on the background check first. You made that motion, didn't you? Did the background checks?
Did, did you make that motion?
I didn't make that as a motion, but a will as amendment.
So, do we need to vote on that before we proceed?
Let's do the other one, that'd be simple. Get that one out of the way.
Okay.
So, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to amend the, uh, ordinance to add...
You're required of background checks.
I second.
Motion and second. So, uh, we're voting on adding amendment or we're voting on...
We're voting on the amendment.
Adding the sentence. That's the sentence we're voting on. Okay.
Ms. Meredith?
Now, you're called, bro. We had to stop. We have a motion on the floor. You have a motion on the floor. I had to amend a motion on the floor to be a vote on. That's right.
Yes.
And that has to be taken care of before we can do this next one on that.
Can she retract her amendment?
I haven't heard the motion. I just heard a motion to amend, but I didn't hear what the difference was.
Correct.
You don't have a motion to amend. He's got the motion. I'm gonna check presence, vote on Mr. Lees' motion. Didn't you go back there?
So, the motion will be amended.
Listen, she, she made a motion to amend the ordinance. David Lee seconded it, and we were all discussing that and fixing to vote on that. He brought up the background checks, so we need to dissolve hers first and then move on to the background checks or throw it all in one. I don't care what you do. All I know is there's a motion on the floor.
And no point in voting on a motion to amend if you don't say what the amendment is. That's just a wasted effort. So, why don't you withdraw your motion to...
I withdraw my motion to amend.
We take your motion. Maybe we can get through this.
So, the work I used to...
So, does it need to be stated?
Is it a motion board or not?
You want me to state it for you, Mr. Lees?
So, we got several amendments to vote on before...
The board shall require background checks for all coaches and assistant coaches participating in more games. Period. Okay.
We have a motion. I want you to get that there.
And you're gonna second that motion, right?
I didn't second it.
Okay. All right, I've got a second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Ms. Meredith? Okay, so, you're in discussion on this amendment. I did want to say, we're gonna handle the other amendments that are strike-through, are it a separate motion or is it one?
Yeah, we're gonna do this one, though.
Questioned out.
Cause I didn't have any other questions. I only have one mic. We just gotta go through it.
Okay. So, this is discussion on the... Ms. Meredith, call the roll. It's about power for the coaches.
Councilman Cal, Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries on the amendment to, uh, the ordinance. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for the additional amendments, uh, uh, on the, uh, draft of the ordinance. For...
So, can I make a motion? Just so we can go ahead and get this portion taken care of?
Do I make a motion, do just what's in there? You can.
I make a motion that we do just what's in there.
You substitute section one in the, in the document and hand it out for section one passed on first reading. That's what you do.
Oh, that's what I'm doing. That's what my motion says.
Okay. You got that, Paul?
I amend the motion.
Was that a second for you?
No.
Okay. I second the motion that we replace what is in the passed-out document here for section one for the one that was in the original.
There you go. There you go. Good job, Henry.
Can we have a discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I come back to, that section one states two members. Are we adding a council member? That's my question.
Can we change that after this ordinance is...
It's just gonna take a two-reading ordinance to amend it once you pass it. So, it's good if you, if you know you want to change it, so it'll go and pass a change of a second reading, just separate, than having to go through this whole processing again.
This is gonna sound really, really confusing. Can I amend my amendment?
Just withdraw your amendment.
No, I withdraw my amendment.
Make another one.
Okay. Discussion.
She withdraws her second, I'm sure.
Yes, I was trying to second it, but I want a discussion. It's gonna get to something, so I can discuss.
How do we do what we're, what we're doing here with that amendment?
Nobody knows what you want to do.
Councilmember...
I know what I want to do.
Make a motion to amend section one by adding the, to require a council member to serve as a liaison with this board.
I make a motion to amend section one to add a council member to serve as liaison as a member of this board, non-voting member.
Non-voting member on the Parks Board. There you go.
I second it.
Thank you.
But that is in addition to the changes that are on paper, correct?
In addition to the changes that are on the paper.
I second that.
All right, just gonna have a second. Okay. So, I have a motion and a second for that amendment?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Meredith?
Do we want this done?
I think it's pretty succinct for you. The non-voting member or the councilman?
Okay. Just make sure, I, everybody's good with the changes. The door down, I ain't gonna make. Motion as...
Do we need to vote on the amendment?
I'm gonna get this over.
That's what I said, we're not there yet. Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion for the amendment to amend the ordinance has passed. Now, with no other, you know, amendments to be presented, I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 032022.
That motion's already been made.
We're already there. You just ready for a vote?
Or a range of votes?
On the ordinance is amended, you're ready for a vote.
Okay.
We're ready for a vote.
Okay. I will, we're in the discussion portion of the original, uh, ordinance. Uh, David, you weren't here, and Doug, you weren't here, but, you know, I had scheduled an informal meeting with the people that were interested in moving over what, as a group, that I felt would be some of the requirements of the committee, other than just set the rules. We're gonna look at some grant opportunities and, uh, some things. And there's, uh, the State Department of Recreation stuff has, uh, recently restarted their grant cycle, and I have a two-year period to explore a park natural plan process that will identify what the park will be. And I explained to those, uh, people that, uh, interested in the committee that they would be doing it blindly. There's a whole process. I've got a hundred-page document here about that process and how it goes. It's not just, you know, they wouldn't be just in charge of trying to decide how we want to develop a soccer field. We'd have to look at if there's enough soccer field, if we have to, if we need our growth plans and things like that. And all of those things will be answered and put in place to allow us to be successful in a grant cycle in two years, coming in money, coming level. And, uh, we talked about that in detail at the meeting, so they would, that would be a huge role in what they were doing beyond just setting the rules, but they, of course, worked with the council and the recommendations as, as it says in the ordinance. And then we also talked about, I had a strong desire to create, uh, a facility that had an equal football field and an equal soccer field beyond just baseball, that is, that's part of what this community would look like. So, that, that's basically what we talked about. And, uh, they asked a lot of questions and had a lot of good ideas, and that's good. The amendment to have a council member on there so they would know what they had to do to them initially so they could partake with it would be easier than to come forward to this body with a representative. So, it's probably was granulating, a lot of our record made, and we talked about how we've attempted this a couple of times. Through this ordinance, we took a lot of steps to prevent things that weren't prohibited to the committee moving forward previously. So, we're, we're in good shape. So, if I have any more discussion about the park's ordinance, cause my question... One quick thing, I would say, um, we're going to allow them to go back to their boards and give formal recommendations of who their representatives need to be, and just collectively bring those to City Hall or to my attention, and, uh, we will come back at another meeting of the council to approve those.
You caused a question one more time.
Yeah. I was saying, we will, we're not pretty things tonight. We will do that, not, I hope, but, okay. Um, Ms. Meredith?
Yes.
Call the roll.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, before we get into the new business, we ended the agenda to add Logan to the agenda, I would like him to come and talk about his task order.
Go ahead.
You. I didn't pass it out. I brought some copies of the draft as you... Can you pass this to Mayor, since you had it? This is an updated copy that, as he talked about amending this a little bit at the work study, uh, so, and he provided this to me yesterday. So he provided this to me yesterday, I knew y'all didn't have it ahead of time, but very similar and all that info.
If you may, I want to cut a copy. So this is a revised version of the task order we reviewed at the work study session two weeks ago. So this is the final draft. Since we last met on the work study session, I previewed this initially, made some revisions based on some items we felt like you guys could cut costs on, that the city could handle yourselves and wouldn't be necessary typically. I drafted the original for anything that would need to be included in the script of work, like talking with the mayor, he and I were sort of working this script down, and so we cut out about five thousand dollars. And that is, what that involved was, looking at the assumptions, the script of the city, the city provided sample data. Originally, I had us performing the sample ourselves, which we're capable of, capable of doing, if you need that. I also reviewed this with Angela Jones, since her and I compared it with TXD, I'm making sure this is gonna put on every element of the state that's asking for it. So that's been changed as well. I believe that this really is, this is what we reviewed, this is the first step, first phase of the point in expansion. Is there anything else that you guys had in mind, that, those are a few things that I wanted to mention that I know we talked about last time, with issues that I set up to arrange. Are there any questions about that?
I will make a motion to pass this task order for expansion study, so that we can talk about it.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the U C's task order for the waste water treatment plant, phase one of the expansion study.
One thing I do want to add.
Hold on, we need to play on.
Sure.
We need to.
I don't have to vote.
I just wanna make sure this is clear, and this is really a matter of, when we discuss schedule, and you guys have some expectation based on, we provided an opinion letter on, the assessment of the plant, gave an opinion on the capacity of the plant to serve part of the road. And in that, we provided an estimated schedule on what it would take to, the phases, how many months in each phase to implement a new plant, and we saw that to, out to around twenty-five. I hope that was clear in the way that we expressed that, that is very estimated or approximated scheduling. I'm allowing one more time in this task order, in this study phase, that what we initially allowed them to pay. So just wanna make sure that that is clear, this, frankly, in the time that it's taken, since then, that opinion letter had an estimated date of starting up a new plant, but that was assuming that we would need it to begin in some of those phases. So I can tell you now, it won't be April twenty-five that that happens, that was, I guess, your ballpark estimate, not so much as, that you could put on the calendar that's gonna happen.
This task order here is necessary to do the expansion on the plant that we're all building right now, right?
I'm sorry.
This task order here is, this is necessary, it's gotta be done so we can expand.
That's right.
The capacity of the one that's being built right now.
That's right.
Now, why, why can't we expand on the, on the one that's being built right now without this?
Let's see. That's what I started with, I'm interjecting, that this process allows us to do a review of the requirement for T D A, to look at the different alternatives beyond the expansion, and allow them to provide questions to us that we'll ultimately have to answer in the justice.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that's, if I'm not mistaken, the way that the state would set it is, the current plan that's being built right now is approved as is. Essentially, anything that deviated with that would essentially be a new plan, and we'd have to start it all over again. Outside of the money, it's, it was major changes in the script design, and so really, it would actually hurt us if we tried to force that, because it would actually probably stop what we're already done, which is not productive.
So not only would the state not allow it, even if the state had no issue with it, we would recommend moving forward without this kind of designation that's been in the report. It's identified what's the best route we're, whether it's to expand, expansion in the way that this project is divided, it's potentially adding on to the existing plant. It could be, it could be that alternative, or it could be adding a completely separate plant at a location, and it takes this level of effort to be able to identify what's most cost-effective, um, the initial option.
And the state would be very instrumental in that, like you said, because expansion is a broad term in this, in this scope, because it could be a whole nother plant, at a whole nother location, at a whole nother string.
Right, that's what the person said. Will the state work, code with you guys on the evaluation part of the existing conditions of the, of the current plan now?
They will give feedback.
Okay. So they'll, they'll give a green light, or a red light, depending on what they, and this task order will allow that conversation to happen with G M C and the state, correct? No, no other, no other, uh, uh, things are needed from us, I mean, you, the ball will be in your court basically, to have a communication with the state to determine whether or not the existing plant could benefit us down the line in some capacity, or expand the capacity in some way, right?
That's right. And it's informal discussion, they can't give a formal approval of anything that we discuss, but they can tell us what to include or not include in the report that we, at the end of this phase. So if anything, if we were to say, hey, here's this alternative we're considering, to put the plant here, at this size, and discharge to this string, they could say, that's not gonna work because of this reason. And for that reason, we would not approve it for as an alternative.
So let me get a little deeper, that would require the state, this task order could open the door for the state to come in and inspect the current wastewater treatment plant under this, under this task order, correct? And it can open that door in some way, right? Without us having to have a, another, well, we don't need the state's permission to come in anytime, and, but, I mean, this would get the ball rolling on that, right? I'm just trying to add a little deeper in the details, because I do want this task order to complete all those alternatives and to figure out what we want to do in the future. I know that that was a big part of our conversation about looking at the current conditions that we currently have, see if those are in addition to what we're already, our building, could possibly alleviate capacity issues. So I just wanna make sure before I vote on this.
Sixty-two point two point four is a very vital part of the equation, develop population projection based on the current and future development to establish design capacity for the future plant. And you spoke on inspections, the two, two inspections are already in place, and something that would already occur that are not necessarily part of this process, but if there's any practice, would you very well doubt that?
The state doesn't know that we're looking at, and again, I know I'm, I'm probably overlooking analyzing this, I apologize, the state doesn't currently care what we're dealing with this way, what, the old wastewater, the current wastewater treatment plant. Until we start the conversation, until our engineer begins the conversation, says, hey, what about this? So I just wanna make sure that that is part of the, the communication with the state. And I hear, I hear you're pretty confident in that.
Yeah, and you may have seen, I had, there's one thing that I had shaken up, and probably more so, I don't expect that the state would be granted to inspect any facilities, I mean, they can.
Right.
I don't see that as a necessary part of this phase.
Okay.
We had a teleconference with all the people involved in our current permitting process, which allows us to place into the string, and the people on the teleconference were very encouraging that we had done everything that we had agreed to do up to this point, to allow such a thing. And we, and as y'all know, we've gone through great measures to, and to do what the state has asked us to do. And if, if we had not done those things, and collectively, they wouldn't have opened any of this, and I felt like they would have told us, so. But they were very, and there have been other documents, and there's been inspections that do speak about the releasing into the strings and stuff like that, that it is at unacceptable levels, and that the new plant may actually be at the maximum portion of that. And that, and their request for this proposal, the alternatives, you know, they're going to be very highly a part of what they're going to allow. They're not gonna come and knock on our door and say, no, you can't do this, absolutely, we will present everything we can to them, make it efficient. And they are more with us at this point to allow it, but I wanna add something else to this. This proposal for the expansion is, is the proposal for the expansion that will allow us to simply funding for this type of project, where two completely separate parts of the project, so we can't imply the two, or do one for the other. And that, that's could be confusing to everyone.
You're saying, in order to apply more money for something like this, something like this has to already be in motion?
Yes.
And to get money for that.
Yes, they're two separate departments.
That's really the, the, the major reason that this is necessary. The first was the state requires it, second is you want it, because you wanna make sure it's the most cost-effective investment option. And thirdly, the, the, any funding source that you go to, you can acquire, that you provide a document like this report to show that the engineer has thought through the options, and says this is economical or beneficial.
When we first started talking about this, I thought this was so that the, when the plant was completed, that phase one would be ready to get on board of the waste of growth road project, is that right?
Yeah, that's right. Of the existing plants.
Right.
The, the phase one, at the time we looked at the, the existing, the plant that is under construction now, could take phase one without any additional intervention. Is it this phase two, and continuing after that, a part of the road, and any others that would need an additional expansion?
Okay, this, when we say existing, we thought that's a new plant.
Yeah.
Can it be expanded, is it, without building a brand-new plant?
It can, and that would be part of what we were just referring as.
I think what you said before, I think theoretically it can, but I think that.
It's a matter of T D A, I mean, how long?
Whether I work, I have to, that may be a different thing.
And that's beyond finding, discovering if we have the financial ability to do so.
Well, I, I feel like we're taking this thirty-seven thousand, they are about, over the crap labels.
I mean, why, why wouldn't it make more sense just to submit a formal request to T D A and ask them, can we discharge more into this stream? Instead of spending all these thousands of dollars to get that answer?
That's, they're, I'll speak for it.
Sure.
They're requiring us to explore these alternatives as part of the process.
So we can't just call T D A and say, is there a way we can discharge more into this stream? I mean, it, it's not, so, we can't just, we can't just ask them, can we discharge more in there, not, not a matter of if our, if our plant will handle it, because we've got two plants over here, we will, we will have two plants over here. Why can't we just submit a request to T D A saying, can we discharge more into this stream? I understand that a portion of that old plant is in disarray and needs to be torn down, but another half of it over there could still keep going, because it's only about twenty years old, or thirty years old.
I wasn't the impression that part of the construction was the entire thing being torn down, and being taken out.
The, the Consignment Order speaks to our ability to completely eliminate the older plant in its entirety.
Okay.
There will be.
We can't keep any piece of it.
No.
There's a very short list of coordinate pumps, et cetera, that would be salvaged, but it must be decommissioned, board demolished.
So it's not, it's not an alternative, though, of course.
So we can't use that.
To do that is an alternative, it's probably not on the table.
Well, then, why aren't we evaluating existing conditions if we can't use that?
That's, that's a pretty good term.
We talked about that today, Ms. Meredith, he has took some of that out of the proposal, we didn't speak to that.
Yeah, existing conditions are, is not just the plant, it is the flow you're saying, existing conditions of, um, what's the word? And where you could put a plant, it's, it's analysis of, um, or analyzing the options, where do you have existing?
There were some items in his original proposal that would reveal a lot of the construction of the current plant to evaluate for its readiness to be expanded, and as it's, it's on here, and it speaks about that, it's assuming that those things are accurate, as they're already designed.
What would it cost me to go through G M C to get you to submit a request to T D A to say, what is the maximum output that we can discharge into the stream after building the appropriate facilities to treat our wastewater?
After building?
Not after building, what, what would, what would it cost me to ask you to submit a request to T D A, asking that? I mean, I understand right here, you're telling me I can get it for, for thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars if I have you do all this other stuff, but if I just want you to submit a request, asking that question, what is the maximum amount that you will allow me to discharge this, what's that gonna cost? Because that's the question I want answered right now.
To answer the question, what would it cost, I don't think it makes sense to say, because I, frankly, to, to send something to the state to ask for additional discharge from a plant that isn't rated for that, they would usually say, anything over one, three, and you do, it's not a real one. If we're talking about, we've already made upgrades, this expansion would be part of getting increased permits to do that. It, it would be, I mean, I could give you a cost for really anything, in any scope, you guys said you were all into, but I wouldn't recommend asking that question, because I can tell you that was, it wouldn't be.
There.
It's not necessary to discuss, really, because they would say, the capacity of the plant needs to be more before we can discharge it more.
Well, obviously, but if we were to build at this plant, again, hypothetically speaking, if we were to build this plant, you, you can't just go to them and say, if we had this, would this be allowed?
If you had.
If we had another plant just like this one, would it be allowed? That's, I mean, would that be not a sufficient question to ask them to get approval, and then be able to give you some sort of answer?
Yeah, I mean, we can give them, so you're talking about, to propose to the state, can we, if we had a.
You need every bit of what's in here, in order to get the state to give you that answer is what I'm asking.
Part of, so, Mayor, and this is just, because this is a conversation, this, the conversation we had with the state originally to talk through, hey, we're interested in, the, the city is interested in an expansion of wastewater capacity. One of the things that the state stated would be required, which is very common in studies like this, would be a wasteload allocation or a discharge analysis to determine if a little tramel can accept additional discharge of what is.
Because here's my fear, is that we spend thousands of dollars with you for this study, and you say, well, the best place to put a wastewater treatment plant is over here in this corner of the city, but the state will never approve it because of some random muscle that won't allow you to do that. Or preservation, but.
Well, I think he already spoke, it's not gonna recommend anything that the state will allow, and, and that, that's what, so.
So the state has engineers that are trained in the same ways that we are, so the things that we, the way that we design the plant, the way that they check the design of the plant, the same principles, the same, same degree of engineering. So when we, when we submit something, it's going to be by the same standards that they are gonna check it by, and we can be confident, generally, it's going to be accepted, probably because we're having a discussion along the way about, hey, this is what we are submitting. I, I will say, it's, um, this is, this is not just a way to go about getting additional wastewater capacity, this is, this is the way.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're not spending money that we don't have.
I wanna, I wanna add.
Always here for conversations like that.
I wanna add one more thing to that. What, what you ask for is a logical question.
Absolutely.
But this study also can make sure that this plant and its expansion is suitable for a fifty years of our growth. And if you, if you shoot a number out there and say, we won't, then what's gonna, they need to provide this number of this amount of discharge, we're certainly gonna miss that one, like, like we have previously. So it's a, it's a potential shortcut that we would be ready.
Yeah, I think, I think basically the question is, is there any, any way to do this other than a step like this, is there, is there something, because that's how we, frankly, that not going down the wrong path, just to take a step instead of ten, and it probably feels like ten steps. But this, this is the step that will get us to identify alternatives, identify the costs associated with each of those, and submit it to the state. At the end of the day, it is up to the state to say this is pretty good, and there are some areas where our team has submitted, with the municipality has submitted the P B R, and the state said, this, this is unacceptable, but it's not usually just rejected, it is, let's make these changes. So that conversation would start once this is submitted. The thing, conversation about, can we ask for, can we just add some additional discharge to the stream, would take analysis on that stream and on the wasteload that there's no way to do with this reward?
Okay.
We do have a lot of feedback from the state that exists on quarterly reports and things that they've done, and talk about those infractions, and those discharges, and what's allowed and what's not allowed, and how we're either making limits or moderating the limits. I can get you some of that information, but that'll kind of answer your question outside, that's the stuff that they're gonna compile and look at, to give this answer. But it's, it's very detailed, uh, stuff that I don't think you're qualified to look at, but it answers those questions, and it breaks you down.
Call question, right.
Okay. No more discussion about this proposal. Refresh my memory on who made the motions.
I did.
You made the motion. And you seconded? And we have a motion and a second to, to the task order for wastewater treatment plant expansion, Ms. Meredith, call your own.
Okay, Councilman Wilkerson, yes. Lee.
Yes.
Cowherd.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, I'll, I'll give you the top of, uh, to just discuss the whole area.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you, loving. The first item under new business is the drainage proposal for David Harrison. Everyone, Mr. David, the proposal at the work study. I have discussed the proposal with Mr. Bradley. If y'all entertain, I'll entertain a motion to approve Mr. Harrison's, uh, proposal to fix his drainage. And, uh, as we discussed, his, uh, proposal did not include the city doing the work and Mr. Harrison, Mr. Calvert, the paper of materials. But he did agree at the meeting that if we did that, he would sign a liability paper of materials. And you can speak to that if you would like a little further.
It's a reason, I'd still get Aaron to do an agreement, just harmless harm the liability.
If you want to do it, we can draft those agreements, they don't have to be done. So, we can get materials cost and we can do the liability agreement after you guys approve it.
For the council's notification, can you read exactly what the proposal is, so that we know what is being motioned or not motioned?
Can we get a, I think we need to get a motion first. We need a motion before we discuss. If I make a motion, we, uh, settle the proposal, the drainage, uh, position that Mr. Harrison's in.
Second.
A motion, second, to approve Mr. Harrison's proposal. And let's talk about it.
Okay, so we're talking about option three, at least discussed at some point.
Option one, and two, or.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff, and the city would do the work.
That's correct. Option one or two are combinations of option number three. But are you still in agreement, David, that you, you got the paper of materials?
So, we pay for the rock and the under, and the underlay.
Okay, and we provide the labor, and you'll sign the whole harmless agreement? And that, that's what you guys are agreeing to do, yes? We will draft that, uh, agreement to show the cost of the material, and, uh, draft the whole harmless agreement for him, so he chooses to do this. Are you, any more discussion, if I have any more questions?
So, are we just staying on y'all's land, or we'll have to get off on church's land?
Not sure how far, you told them about going up?
I believe.
I think we can stay on our own land, it'll be all right.
I believe on y'all's side.
Get the flat on the top of there.
Yeah, I believe we would be.
I think we should be able to stay on our land entirely. The top of my land levels off just before it gets to the church's land. I think we can stay in that area, in that corner of, of our land.
Aaron, his diagram that he divided at the work study, is that the, the way that the city engineer looked at the, at the possibility of doing the project?
Yes. Aaron, Aaron knows which side of, there's a utility pole that separates our properties, and Aaron said he wanted it to go on particular one side, to stay away from a water meter and some water lines. So, Aaron knows, that's why I wanted, that's why I was so hopeful y'all would do this, instead of us just hiring someone that would end up making a mess out of something that we would be responsible for then. But Aaron knows which way it needs to go, so.
Now, I do have a question there about, and I don't think I've talked to you about this, but are we looking at relocating that power pole or going to the side of it?
It's gonna go to the side of it.
For most of the scope of work will actually be on your property.
Coming down to you later?
Very.
Just to be clear, it does not follow the property line to the church.
No.
No, it does not, no, so. But like I said, the engineer looked at it, Aaron looked at it, and knows exactly what needs to be. And it's, and also, we want this water to wind up where it needs to be, instead of calling this problem the, someone else's problem. So, in my view, that that's why I think, uh, how our people, how we do it, how we do it, because, and then, it could be done, not that they couldn't have done it, like, how likely that they would do it, it could be done. We still have problems.
Yeah, we, we didn't wanna fix our problem either and create a problem for someone else.
Correct.
So, that's raising me and Aaron was looking at it, and this way the water flows and where the culvert's already at.
Aaron, did you do a cost estimate on the material for this?
I have not, no, sir. And the biggest reason why is because that's subject to change by the time we can get to doing it.
Well, that's where the, this conversation is, you know, you can approve it, provided that it doesn't cost like two thousand dollars or exceed five thousand dollars or whatever. And I think that's important to talk about, because if you agree to the deal, no matter what it costs, we would be down the grid here.
Labor-wise, uh, and machinery is what the city would be providing if they're furnishing the rock and the, uh, we'll haul the rock and all that, uh, because I understand they, you know, don't have a way to do that. It's my understanding that they would furnish or reimburse the city for the rock and the underlay. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay, well, for, for their benefit, this would certainly be one load of, right? I mean, do you, and.
It's more than likely gonna be about two.
Okay. And, and the, in your experience purchasing this rock, what has that cost in the past?
Probably looking at somewhere around, for two little shot, you're probably looking somewhere around twelve hundred, I'm, I'm guessing, right around there.
Is that, is that understandable, that it's that kind of cost to you guys? I mean, if it was like, like, say, if it was five or ten thousand dollars, you'd be like, I know you're incurring a lot of the cost, what you're having to do with.
Well, that must be ten, a hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, but, you know, you don't have to be clear, you know? If it was very expensive, they may say, hey, we don't, we don't want that to be, so, you know.
Well, it's not bad at all, is it?
No, no.
So, basically, what we're doing is the option number one, he provides, if y'all, you got that?
Yeah.
That we provide the equipment and labor to this, and we provide all of the material.
But option number one doesn't speak to that, they're going to pay the cost.
Yeah, we had created option three at the work study.
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna withdraw my motion and make another one, somebody withdraw the second.
I agree.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, do this drainage ditch, the city provide the equipment and labor. Mr. Harrison, Mr. Calvert, provide all the material costs.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
And second, to, uh.
I would truly original motion, though.
Oh.
I would draw it.
David, I wrote that one down.
You're right.
You should have corrected me.
No, it's okay, we're good, we're good, we're in order now.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second to, to do the drainage proposal, provided they will pay it, pay for the material cost and sign a waiver, uh, of the original liability. Ms. Meredith? Call it up. Do we have no further requests? Do we have a second on that?
I already said.
All right, we're ready.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson? Yes.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe, Aaron, or when you might do this project?
Two, three weeks, um, depending on weather, uh, but hopefully within three weeks of the, um.
Yep, and contact me and I'll pass it on to Green and Lisa. We appreciate this, thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all. I'm gonna excuse myself, my wife's at home with three grandkids.
I'd say here.
The next item on the agenda is the, uh, standard specifications for developers. I'm providing an update of this for you, everyone. As a group, we have talked about this a lot, but, uh, this is something that is in response to the consent order that will be required for the sustainability portion of the new plant and how we, uh, go forward. Mr. Bradley has reviewed the proposal. There's a couple of things that have changed since, uh, Brian Griffith wrote his proposal. The first thing is, his proposal was written over a year ago, and at that time, you know, not a whole lot was going on. He had a thirty days' proposal to write this workup, and his draft, everyone has in their hands right now, he's proposing it'd be a hundred and twenty days. And that, that, that had changed since his original presentation. And when Mr. Bradley reviewed his proposal on, on page four, and I struck through for everyone, uh, the indemnity, I can't pronounce the word, indemnity, uh, clause, uh, is struck through. And, um, if, if you guys would like to approve this, I will reach out to him to see if that's acceptable, or I will not sign the contract. Mr. Bradley, and I spoke about it, it should not be a problem for us to approve it without that. And he shouldn't have a problem removing it, but I certainly, my, uh, approval would be in the clause in the contract. But, uh, he spoke about these things in detail at the work study, and if anybody had any questions? This, uh, is a proposal that is nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars, and a big portion of what he is asking for here is spoke to, that we will implement these, uh, this product into the, the spot, it's into consent order. That's, uh, so. Because we, we have two of these, and this one is the more complex of the two. The other one is in bullet points about what is provided.
I'm gonna make a motion, pass the standard specifications on developers.
We have a motion? I'll second. A motion and a second to pass these standard specifications. Are there, does anybody have any questions? I know this one is very, uh, got a lot of terms and a lot of legal stuff in it.
And since we haven't done this before, we don't have to amend it even if we've looked at it and, and made some changes to.
It was your approval, it was your got to have.
Yes, we, um, this is a proposal for him to provide the information for the, okay? I know it seems silly for the standard specifications, but, uh, our, the consent order speaks to putting these things in place, and there are a lot of, uh, benefits to having this in place as we move forward and we grow. And it seems silly because I am not able to speak to exactly. The technical specifications related to the water distribution, uh, up to twelve inches in that. And those are very important things. Does anybody have any questions about this? Ms. Meredith, call the row, please.
Uh, Councilman Calvert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson? Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries, I will reach out to him about the contract. This next one will be easier. This is the development, uh, policy. It's the same thing, it had the indemnity clause, and it originally had thirty days to prepare, but because of the timeframe, I will say he stuck to the, uh, proposed price from a year ago, that he would give more time to complete the project. And, uh, like I said, this one's a little easier to decipher, because it's got some bullet points on page one about what you're going to provide for us, uh, that are required as well. So, I'll entertain a motion for developer's policy.
Make a motion and we pass the developer's policy?
I say.
A motion or second, pass the developer's policy. Does anybody have any questions? Uh, on page one of the policy, which is actually the third page, uh, the, uh, letter bullet points are very specific items, and we benefit from these because we don't currently have any of these officially in place. And the example that I can speak to is, when a developer, uh, will require services from the city for water or sewer, I currently draft a, they draft a letter, and they provide it to me, and I reach back out to the engineer, and he will look at their request and provide an individual cost of providing the answer for the capacity of the water sewer. And without a document like this in place, we, we don't necessarily have a mechanism to, uh, hard to develop before the cost of doing the request. And that's just one of the things that this will answer, uh, but it's, these letter bullet points are, are very vital. I feel like as we grow, and we'll apply the things that we don't even were out there, they will apply to the future. And they are very minimal, I think, the cost that he is recommending to do both of these proposals is something that we will recoup in a very short period of time. And it will save the office staff, it will save the engineering services, and it'll save Aaron some trouble because they're very specific things that the developer will have to do. And I wanna go back, I wanna backtrack to the other document, because they sound like they're very same things. The developer policy is just how the forms and things that we put in place to provide them, and the standard specifications are how they will actually provide these things to us. It'll be how they build their system, what we require, that may be very different from what another utility will require. Or, might be far beyond the minimum, but it makes habits, and that's how we were, you know, how we do it. Does anybody have any questions? I mean, this one, I'd say, a little easier to decipher than the other one, but, uh.
Call for questions, Brian.
Okay. Ms. Meredith, call the row?
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson? Yes. Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries, I'll reach out to him about the indemnity clause, and we will revisit that if he's not willing to move it from the contract. The next item on the agenda is the Water and Sewer Services Contract. This, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Water and Sewer Services Contract for the given discussion.
I'm interested to read the Water and Sewer Services Contract.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second the motion, let's see what this is.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Water and Sewer Services Contract? Again, Hittok Davis presented this proposal. This is a standard proposal that, I'm gonna follow together. Castage Friends has this, Portland has this, and it's almost worth the word, the same contract. But it will provide, as we spoke about, the tenant fees, it allows documentation that. It allows documentation that will put into writing that if they don't build our specifications and they don't meet our requirements, that we are not obligated to provide them with the service. And the fees that we are incurring with the cost of development that are mostly unknown because we don't, we've not done this a lot. But this is the legal document that will allow us to, you know, take action. So development, that's not done in court, it's to our.
So that's true, similar for us.
This is, it's the same, but the, the tap fees, whatever they may be, will be written into the contract. And it will be, the Water Services Contract will be either the sewer, or the water, or both individually. And it'll cover those type of things.
Did he mention this in the work study?
Did we have a copy of this?
We don't have a copy of that.
They sure didn't get a copy of that in the, in the packet. I don't feel comfortable putting them something that we.
He provided this at the work study. That's why I had it come. He didn't get this in the packet.
He sure didn't.
Everyone already had it. I'm pretty certain I passed it out.
Like what?
Mr. Bradley, you got a copy of it?
No, Brian Griffith, we can't.
Right here in the agenda notes, it says that he got the documents from Bradley.
Yes, but that's, yeah.
Have you reviewed this? Well, look at it. It's very rough. It's, it's not, it's got a lot of blanks and it's really not tailored for Westmore. So it's, it's a template. I think some, talks about overall about districts. I assume it's some utility district that uses it. It's got a lot of blanks and a lot of things that would probably require you much discussion about percentages of development costs for paying or anything.
I, can I make a motion to defer this until I can see a final draft of the contract that's tailored to Westmore? That doesn't have all this, this, what notes and.
We have a motion already on the table. But unless they want to withdraw or we vote on it, you can then, you can then table a discussion.
I think you've been motion to defer. That takes precedence over all those motions if it's got a second. You have a second?
Second.
We're going to talk about this more to work.
We need to vote.
Yeah, we gotta vote.
We gotta vote on whether to defer.
Ms. Meredith.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cowbert.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll be needing to do some attempts maybe to be more specific for there's not so much, so many blanks on the document. But also, the tap fees and stuff like that do need to be specific to us, I suppose.
Baron suggested you try to get that prepared before the next agenda goes out. And if you go and they can review it before the meeting and see just what's in it, and then it'll be debated at the next meeting.
And this next item, we intend this, is what I suppose last time, go ahead and raise, raise the tap fee for water, tap fee for sewer. And I'm gonna make that motion to raise the water tap fees $500 and sewer tap fees $1,000 at the present.
We have motion to, for the next item, which is the tap fee increase. This is just something I wanted to provide to everybody of that. The tap fee increase may or may not be in Ohio, but everybody else is. And you can see from this document provided from M-PASS that the fees are all over the place, but they're very specific to these communities for whatever their purposes are. And this document of this snapshot was done in 2020. And Aaron and I talked today that a lot of the costs have certainly increased since that time. So the proposed increases to the tap fee are, I don't feel like, are out of line with our costs because this one's, this study showed from two years ago.
Okay, to refresh my memory, what is our current fee?
Okay, I have this.
You said increase. Very angry.
The inside of the season limits is $1,500 currently.
Is that water sewer?
Uh, water tap. And we're going, with $500, it'll be $2,000. And outside of the season limits is currently $3,000. And it will increase it to $3,500. Sewer tap fees are, a new tap is $1,200, increasing it to $1,700. And that is, of course, that's inside the season, that's not.
Sewer was going $1,000, 22.
So.
42,000.
42,000, okay. So this is a typo in this, in the thing I have in front of me. But also, on this, we have what is considered to be an inspection fee on the books. And the inspection fee is currently $15,000. That's not even covered. I worked with the legislature for this, that's a good point. And Aaron and I talked about that a little bit today. He had a recommendation about that inspection fee. Should they, you spoke to them, that should be minimum $45?
In my opinion, yes, sir.
So, in my view, that part of the tap is the inspection fee. So, you know, I don't think you, if you're going, but because that's not increasing everything by $100.
Well, that's, the inspection fee, I added $45 to that motion.
We have a motion and a second to increase the inspection fees to $45 and the other water sewer tap fees by $500 and $1,000.
There has been established by ordinance resolution, I can't remember. Because you can't just amend an ordinance by motion.
This current proposal, when we looked it up, it was done by, we've had it on the books in both forms.
What we might want to do is put this in the form of an ordinance. Give it an effective date of June 1st. Get something in front of you, we got it where everybody knows in advance. Where then just, make it pass it tonight. Is that what it's gonna be tomorrow? I mean, you know, you know, I, normally you give some, some lead time to let people know what to do and what the fee would be. We could get it before June 1st. We could, we could pass it on first reading at the May meeting, or you could have a special reading at, you could have a special session at your student session in May. Or you could pass it in May and start at June 1st. That might be better to get sooner rather than later.
Well, I'll put that in full of a motion. If you know the next motion or order's number, I'll put it all forward.
2022 dash two.
That's it.
Be the, right?
I can't figure that system at all. I have a 1, 2, 3, 4.
Here are 4, 2, 3, 2, 2, dash 2,000.
Whatever it is, we'll just want to put on.
Whatever the number is, that's what we'll put on.
Then be the next agenda back, with all the numbers, that even, the increases that he's set for.
We will sign the appropriate ordinance number to this tap fee increase. And we have motions and seconds to this. Any more discussion?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Cowbert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Brian, you okay to move it right to the floor?
Yes, we're fine. The next item on the agenda is the Police Department computer upgrades. We spoke to them at the work study, correct? We do have that.
And I will make a motion, Mr. Meredith, to allow the Police Department to do the necessary computer upgrades.
I'll second the motion.
And motion and a second. I'm not certain you provided a quote at the work study at that time.
Actually, yeah, I think it's in the packet.
Do more packet, we got it.
Yes, it's like you have it.
Well, we did it that night.
We lied that night.
It ended up being a little bit less than what I thought. And that also, just to let you know, that includes a computer that's needed for codes. So that's four, four for the Police Department and one is actually for codes.
And I will say, I would approve this, but it's over this minimum that I'm allowed to approve without bringing to the council. We would, we would already had it done if it was something I could have approved. How, quick question, how, this is, how long will this last? What are the expectations that this upgrade will be?
Heating is specific only, but, and Cameron maybe will actually address that better than I could. But generally speaking, you probably need to upgrade every five years or so. It just depends on what technology changes and stuff. Is that about?
Typically, stuff like this comes with a one-year warranty unless you, you know, buy, buy an extended warranty of some, some sort. And, yeah, I would say, you know, every three is probably too often. But typically, what we're used to is we go four and five. I will say that I'm familiar with doing it at a level, though, that we generally already have another one sitting there waiting to go to. And so that's a little different than it breaking and not being under warranty and then turn around and even buy one. But, no, I think that, you know, every, every four to five is generally, because by the time that you've gotten to that time, either hard drives are better than they used to. But most of the time, whenever it's a spinning drive, if you got to that point, that, if nothing else was gonna fail, that sucker was gonna fail. So those have gotten better, but, yeah, that's.
And this is more hardware than software. It's not something that you'll decide that you need to purchase some sort of software and let it date.
Right, that's right. And one of the biggest things about this upgrade is, in the past, before I was here, we didn't really have an IT person. So if there was a computer needed, someone that worked at the Police Department would go to Best Buy and buy a computer. This is, we have an IT person we're working with that has recommended these and he will hopefully be on board and help us in the future. And that we'll, we'll have the things that we need for the Police Department for codes. Whereas before, we just kind of found what we could.
We have a motion and a second. We've had a discussion. Ms. Meredith Caldwell, please.
Councilman Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cowbert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the quote from Comtech about doing the repair to the weather warning file. Ms. Kisha did verify that his quote that is provided is still a good quote through a month and a half. There's some questions about it still being valid. And we talked about this, we talked about this a very long time, a little over a year ago. Anyway, I'll stop right there. Do you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass the outdoor weather warning signal or approve this quote from Comtech.
I will say. A motion and a second to approve the quote to do this upgrade or repair.
20,000, has it been bid?
I, I haven't seen no bids.
I think it needs to be bid.
Let's work through this one. I don't want to say it needs to be bid and then have to bid. We can certainly find out if this is the only version that's available, so we can do that.
This is, you think this is a sole source?
We, we have had other proposals, but they're like $150,000 proposals.
Much cheaper than everybody at Weather Radio.
The.
Much cheaper.
So we have a motion and a second, but a recommendation from the attorney is to, to put this out to bid.
If you believe you want to do it, if you want to repair it, put it out to bid. You won't put it out to bid if that's not what you want to do. I mean, there's no point making it there. That's the decision I can ask to be made. What was the recommendation of M-PASS?
The, we did reach out to M-PASS about it, but we did speak with Ken Widener over a year ago. And there's been tons of discussions about, should we do this or not? And we, I think we talked about it as a group, if it's still in place, it needs to be functioned and be repaired, and this. So.
I will make a motion to defer it, to the work study.
To defer this to the work study and get more information.
It's not understanding that the system does work, it's just not worked automatically. It's gotta be manually turned.
Well, it's actually worse than that. Of course. Yeah, it picks up on low, low-flying planes and random radio signals and sets off a false alarm, goes off on accident.
All the reason to take it down. It's a tremendous liability.
We have a motion and a second to, to all papers say.
I know.
Next second.
Next item on the agenda is the pay raises for Police Department and to the Police Department office staff.
Now I'll make the motion to give the Police Department and office staff the $3 an hour raise like we did with Public Works, including Chief Jolly House.
I'll second.
I will add to that, if I can, that this, the original add-in. Okay, you say?
Yep. I will make.
Just so everyone understands, Kisha had provided a short-form analysis of this proposal compared to the other proposal for the other employees. And it's approximately $40,000 that will be coming from the hospital insurance line, which is over budgeted. As everyone understands, that the budget amendment for this is not on the agenda tonight. Because of, there's, the additional money will be coming from the fund balance.
I thought Kisha posed it works, but it'd be easier if it all come from fund balance.
Well, her analysis pulls most of that money from the insurance fund that's over budgeted. I think it'll be about $40,000 that is not on that, on that line. That's, but like I said, that, this requires a talk for the budget amendment. We can talk about the budget amendment when she prepares it, so everybody will be.
So we'll have a budget amendment prepared for the work study?
Yes, and this was one of the, one of the reasons that we didn't have that on the agenda. Because a lot of changes, we may even deny, or we have to be, we can't. We have a motion and a second to provide raises retroactive to the same day as Public Works. Any more discussion? Do you, do you have anything there about? Ms. Meredith Caldwell, please.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Cowbert.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the pay for firefighters for the East Tennessee assistance.
Make a motion, we approve paying firefighters for the East Tennessee assistance. Okay, I recommend, what was, what was, what we talked, $100 per person, a day?
Second. A motion and a second to pay $100 per day for the firefighters that attended.
A motion and a second to pay $100 per day for the firefighters that attended the fires in East Tennessee. Ms. Meredith, call the roll, please.
Councilman Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approve the hiring of one additional full-time public works employee and one part-time public works employee. You have hired, we have hired the full-time person already, but the reason this is on the agenda because the money for the full-time person is not budgeted. And that's the only reason we put it on the agenda. There's the new rules saying, you know, Aaron and I, because I think because this one is unbudgeted is the reason it's not on the agenda. So this will, again, be included in the upcoming budget amendment, approved debate. But understand, we've already hired this person. So we have not done...
Do we need to vote on this?
Because it will require a budget amendment. I think it's necessary if you do.
So I'll make a motion that we approve hiring one additional full-time public works and one part-time public works employee, and that we'll have a budget amendment presented at the work study for us to review?
Yes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Meredith, call the roll, please.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is ordinance 04220, wait, 042022 dash one, and it's the resuming on Old Highway 31E, and this is the first. And this, I'm sorry, here.
It's all good.
I'm still getting paid.
So this is, this is, this is the first reading. There's no public hearing necessary, and it's very straightforward. This is what the planning and going has approved.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 042022 dash one.
Well, second.
A motion and a second to approve the resuming ordinance. Ms. Meredith, call the roll, please.
And what property was it? Don't give us partial number, evidence.
Property of 20, or 2002 Old Highway 31E, Westmore, Tennessee.
Weeks of electric, I believe, in.
I see exactly what that says in the document. 2002 Old Highway 31E. Sometimes it says other areas.
Reaching property.
Yeah.
Councilman Wilkerson, yes. Lee.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries. And the item on the agenda is the resolutions supporting natural gas. We, the, we talked about this a little bit, the industrial development board has reached out and tried to do some studies, and I felt it was important that we were passing a resolution that we were, we were pressuring proposals to provide natural gas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to go.
Don't worry, we're good. Good night.
I'll entertain a motion for resolution R42022 dash one in support of doing requested proposals to provide natural gas in Tennessee.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 042022 dash one in support of gathering information concerning natural gas lines in Westmore.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Are we in discussion?
We are.
Just a question, we have to have a resolution just to gather information?
It was discussed by the developer and some people in the community that we, as a council, that we do a resolution to support this because natural gas and resources to provide to us, the feasibility to provide it to us, are, there's an expense involved in that, and that we're taking it serious and that we're pursuing.
Thank you.
I'm glad to talk to you. I'm trying to move this forward faster than what it gets moved, because he asked, he knows people how places are, and he knows the guy that's associated with McDonald's, and he said, why is there not a McDonald's in Westmore? And he said, let me look, I was freezing last night, and he looked through, and he said, no gas.
That's the first perimeter that they look at. And businesses of that scope are all the same way.
I know for a fact, I know for a fact, and I can't reveal my sources, that there's an industry that's about 60 employees that's waiting to be built. If gas is in this town.
There's a lot of industries that would be willing to move once gas becomes available.
At the industrial development board, not the previous meeting or the month before, the city gals and public utilities come forward and he spoke to the, for example, the, the cost associated by the developer for natural gas, with only one third of the cost sufficient to, for them to provide natural gas.
And the guy that I was talking to today is willing to push real hard to get this done, but he was afraid he might be making hurt to feed us, and sort of leaders, including us, and I told him, I said, if you can get this done faster, we'll smooth it when it's over.
That's right. I bet you, I don't think it's a problem.
Call the question.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkerson, yes. Lee.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.